Okay, so we're about to begin today's work session for August sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. We were scheduled to start at eleven, it is now almost eleven fifteen, if we could stand for the pledge. Ms. Giglio will be joining us shortly, she was just a little bit, little bit, so as she, uh, when she comes, she'll come in and join us. Um, I'm ignoring you. Uh, today, we're gonna start with committees, council assignments, and mission statements. Um, at the last meeting, we were asked, uh, where we met with the IDA, we were asked about, um, a liaison for the IDA. Uh, so I had spoken to, uh, Jim about taking on that position as a liaison to the IDA.
It would be my pleasure.
Okay, very good, and I will notify the IDA.
Well, I'll over that, I'll, I'll do it.
Okay, it'll be your pleasure. Um, and also, we did have a, um, a letter of tendering resignation from Larry Sims for the IDA. Uh, so we will be interviewing for a new candidate for the IDA, so if anybody would like to submit applications for that, um, you can do it online and submit them to the town clerk. We will leave that open until, do we have a date that one? Okay. Okay, then I'll have, that'll, that'll have, that'll have the date, the date on that. Um, also, we have been having the committees come in and report off to us. Um, and, uh, so a couple of suggestions, and, and if you could let me know, I know, uh, traffic safety, I believe, is Jody's committee's, so we'll ask if they wanna come in and give a report, uh, is farmland, um, are you farmland?
No, I'm ag advisor.
Is Jody farm, Jim, are you farming Jim? Farmland, would you, yeah, okay, so we can schedule that. Um, is, do you have any other committees that you would like to?
Uh, parking district could come in, bid could come in. They have some plans coming up for the fall and whatnot, we had a meeting last night, we discussed, so.
Do you want them to wait till the parking study, the parking, um, plan is decided?
Probably a better idea.
Okay, so we can schedule them probably for the end, towards the end of September, maybe the third week in September? Um, is there any, any of your other committees that you'd like?
Uh, senior committee, senior advisory already came in. Um, no, I think that's it.
And did you wanna do parking and bid together or separately?
I would do them separate.
Okay, so then, do you wanna maybe have the bid, we can schedule the bid prior, and then we'll do the parking afterwards? Okay, so we'll contact you through the office and we check with the committee. And your committees, when would you like them to?
I think from anytime.
Okay. All right, so we'll schedule them.
Hey, Brian, that's good.
Okay.
We postponed this last week evening, only for example, we got for a week.
And you also have your anti, anti litter committee?
Yeah, we're meeting in September, so, um, to be advanced out again, we're working on it.
Okay, well, one of, we had, we had the civic roundtable, and at the civic roundtable, one of the, the civics, uh, had expressed some interest in being able to clear over, uh, in, by them, so I'll, maybe I'll give, I'll have the, that civic contact. You guys, and maybe you can work together to, to do that. I think for the, for the, for the rec, um, I believe that there's going to be some presentations, um, uh, about the, uh, RFI, uh, or whether it's gonna be an RFI, RFP for the, for the rec, uh, area over there, do you wanna do that before? Or do you want that committee to come in and present that once that's kind of?
I wanna wait.
Okay. And then you have ag and TDR? Do you wanna do ag first, and then we'll follow that up with TBR, 'cause, 'cause that's a subcommittee?
No, I wanna do TDR first, and then ag, 'cause ag is waiting on some, something they're working on.
Okay. Okay, very good, so we will work with you guys and schedule those, and, and try to get everybody's yearly reports, um, done. All right, so now, we will move on to arts in the park, creative community, communities grant program, and with Brian DeLuca and Dawn Thomas.
Yay, Brian DeLuca, excellent job, excellent job.
Very cool. Just, and we're just talking about the reflections that took, took, uh, took place last weekend in, in Grantable Park. Uh, it was a transformation for the park, it was absolutely gorgeous. Um, if anybody who missed it, it's again in September and, and September fifteenth, and then again in October. Twentieth, so, um, it was really impressive, I think so many people you heard walking around the park saying they'd never wandered through the park, they didn't realize, you know, what was there and, and what we had as a community here, so I thank you for that and all your work.
Yeah.
Bringing it together, it was really fantastic.
It was my pleasure, it, it, it was really objective, uh, accomplished there, we really set out to create a certain vibe and community involvement in the park, and, uh, yeah, the, the feedback was tremendous, there were people that had never been through the park, the residents, people that had been, hadn't been through it in years, and couldn't believe how beautiful the park was, and of course, with the setting that we, uh, was able to transform it into a great, a great night, and there's a lot more that we could do, we have a lot more on, on our, on our vision and our horizon for this. Uh, funding is of course, um, always a challenge. Uh, there is a small grant, in part today, um, the request is to get a resolution passed for a small grant coming from Huntington Arts Council, it's a five thousand dollar grant with, uh, some in-kind and some match in there. I think we're pretty good on the match side of things, the bid has, uh, been supportive and will continue to allocate about ten to twelve thousand dollars for us on their budget, to help us with matches, whether they're coming from, uh, any, any, any grant, in, in this case, um, uh, New York State CFA, and in this case, uh, with this one, and, um, Dawn was instrumental in getting the PSEG grant, um, that really was the impetus.
PSEG, PSEG was partners in the arts in the park, how did they support?
So, uh, they were the initial ones, uh, Dawn found the grant and, and they put up eleven thousand two fifty, and with a fifty percent match, so then the bid matched that, and then I was able to craft a CFA grant through I Love New York to add elements of, um, art, artisan, craft beverage, uh, and events, and, uh, we got the CFA grant also. So, um, when we do that, I do that for the Eastern Tourism Alliance, we got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that gets allocated to the five towns, each town does as they choose, so we support with that Art in the Park, Winterfest, now Alive on Twenty-Five. So, the Eastern Tourism Alliance also played a role, which, as you know, I'm the president of that organization, so that, that grant, um, helped in many ways to just bring this entire thing to fruition. But, you know, for, for ongoing, we definitely would like to have more funds, 'cause there's a lot more we can do. Um, we'd like to get the high school involved, get the, the middle schools involved, uh, you know, all grade levels. Uh, some of the art was four H camp kids, aquarium camp kids did some of the artwork and.
Timothy Hill, yeah.
Timothy Hill helped tremendously, tremendously, sixty-four bags of cement, digging in foundations, pouring, mixing cement, pouring cement, and then even, uh, setup and so forth, so, um, I, I don't think I'd be standing in front of your hospital eyes if I had to do any of that. So, those guys were great, and they brought, uh, you know, the kids out, and, uh, they, you know, it was really nice, from a community standpoint, to see them in their own community, contributing to their community, and then coming, some of them came the nights of the events to help us set up and break down, and they see what we created, what they helped create. And I think all in all, that was a really strong message from a community standpoint. Collection of CDs, the art piece that I put together took me three months.
Which was beautiful, it was the big fish.
Came out nice for me, for my first time sculpting something, I mean, I, Eli, the resident artist at the aquarium, welded the whole thing together, but, uh, putting it all together, and that was a community thing, 'cause we had donation boxes all over for collecting CDs, and, you know. The old Barney CDs in there, we had people's graduations, you know, I had a bunch of christenings, yeah, look at them all, you're like, you know.
Yeah, the wiggles and doodle buffs.
Uh, so that came, and so there's, there's other pieces, there's some things we'd like to do on the water, there's, um, other elements. So, aside from this grant, that I guess there would be a resolution for this, I'd like to make a request if there can be, um, a blanket, uh, request for any grants in, in, in the arts realm, so there's CFA, there's NEA, National Arts Endowment, and, and then there's Omnibus, and there's just some local, small grants. Um, instead of having to keep coming back to the table, if this board would consider, you know, anything within the next twelve months, that is an art-related grant, that, um, providing that, you know, that we have the match funds, we wouldn't stick our neck out on anything, providing we have the match funds, that we can apply, uh, for any art-related grants, rather than having to keep, because this is, this is, it's five thousand dollars, not to say it's not a lot, but, um, it's, I'd rather just be able to, you know, get the process of the application, 'cause as we start to seek these out specifically, um, you know, sometimes the window is a little bit, a little bit short on this.
And I, and I think Eastern Arts also is, 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 they have a, a, a board that's wanting to become very active in the community in supporting and sponsoring the arts also, I know that they apply for grants also, so, um, you know, let's see, let's, maybe we can have you meet with them.
Yeah, so, so Pat introduced the new director, um, and I, and I, I did subtly, subtly say that in probably two years, this is going to be.
Subtly, Brian.
As subtly Brian can be, that this would, you know, hopefully be your project, I mean, this is not something ongoing, you know. You know, just the way we also gave seed money for Alive on Twenty-Five, you know, and, so I, I, I think that's more of my role is helping get things started and then hand it off to the appropriate teams that can, you know, take it and grow it even further. So, I would hope that they would be able to play a role in this, uh, down the road.
Okay, very good.
And, uh, I just also would note, our engineering department was amazing.
Tremendous.
Instrumental.
We have a best to them, right?
And they really just never don't do stuff, so.
Yeah, Billy, Ernesto, Billy and Jimmy are, you know, on the, on the, you know, digging trenches, putting the electric in. Um, even for my fish in particular, they had a wire, a photo cell, and they gave me the wire, I was able to go, put it in, incorporate it at home, and then they came, and then they, they climbed underneath the fish and wired it into the thing. So, they were fantastic, I mean, and, you know, I think even Ernesto said, you know, when you guys came to us in the winter, we were freezing out in the park, and you were talking about umbrellas hanging over the bridges and all these things in the water, you know, didn't quite see it, but, uh, they, they all, they came out, Billy and Ernesto came out, and I think was really pleasantly surprised of what the vibe we delivered for those two evenings, and we will continue that in the park, and, uh, and you know, just even working in the park every day, alongside electricians and the artists, Clayton and Bob Kern played a big part. The people either walking through, jogging, riding their bikes, or some of the resident people that take naps, uh, loved the art. They loved it, and they appreciated it, and, you know, that was, 'cause clearly, we were concerned of graffiti and damage and so forth, and only takes one, but, um, everything's been, really maintained.
The activity and the buzz going on, I think, was, is, you know, it just helps all the way around, and it, and it makes the park more inviting for everybody.
Certainly, and I, I think I've mentioned, you know, I worked in Manhattan, and Bryant Park twenty years ago was a place that was not a comfortable.
Nobody wanted to go.
Not a comfortable place to have lunch, and, so I, and I think there's, there's an absolute opportunity for us to have the general public enjoy the art and, and enjoy the park, not see it.
I was there, I was there a long time, and it was really great, and, uh, kudos to Brian, because while I was, he was working from start to finish, the whole night. Actually, Clayton, I thought, went above and beyond, because I believe he jumped in the pond.
Yeah.
But I was running into people from, a lot of people from town, and a lot of people from other towns that were saying they didn't even realize we had that beautiful park in there. So, and a lot of people have expressed to me that they were disappointed they missed it, so I wanna make sure we, once again, we say the next two dates, which are Sep- September fifteenth and October twentieth.
Correct.
I think I saw we've been in this situation, I mean, it's a beautiful park, and the town is really scared, no, nothing to try to make it better off, but, 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 it's location, and now we have something to draw to bring them there, and once they see it, I think it's gonna get the buzz in there.
So, this funding is through Huntington Arts Council, it's a five thousand dollar maximum with a, um, thirty percent match, which can be in-kind, that Brian's already indicated that they have the match, I think it's pretty straightforward, I'd like to get permission and go ahead and work on it. The other one, too, is PSEG, we did last year, their downtime revitalization is what was the original funding source for this event. I think we could apply again to them for the next phase, which Brian's talking about being a laser light and fog component, which I think would think, would just be seventeen, eighteen thousand. So, I think I'd like to, with your permission, apply, again, I wanna speak to them first to see if it's something they would entertain. I think they're pretty pleased, um, with what we did on this one, so if it's okay, I can get you two resolutions, I wanna speak to them first, and talk to them about that, but if they're okay with that, I can give you two resolutions for, uh, the next meeting.
We're all okay with that?
I'm good with it.
Absolutely, absolutely, great job, Brian, great job.
Happy to do it.
Really, really proud of that.
Thank you.
I already thank you. And now, we're gonna move on to the comprehensive energy management services. Okay. Um, this is the, uh, for the energy performance contract, the, uh, the, uh.
Contain controls, et cetera?
Yes. I think it was an RFI or RFQ that we put out, or RFP, I'm not sure which.
It's been returned, right, the bids have been returned.
Three bids came back, um, and that's what they're going to speak to us about.
Jim, this is when you sang.
Yes.
You're waiting for you to sing.
I'm, I'm still looking at residents. Listen, you want us singing, you want to be down at the park, uh, tonight, oh, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Well, you go there tonight, you wanna wait, but, uh, anyway, Beatles should be family, very, very good. They'll even change costumes to take you through their whole decade of Beatles.
And that starts at seven, 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 seven o'clock, right?
It's gonna be a blast, we had over three hundred people last week, and I think it's gonna be more this week.
Very good job.
True, before you guys get started, I just, I just wanna thank you, uh, and in particular, Dave Zabrowski, for the work that was done down at the Iron Pier Boat Ramp. Uh, it's been a long time coming, and he spent a lot, a lot of time, uh, revamping it, making the, the wooden bumpers, cutting the poles and getting everything, uh, getting Mother Nature to cooperate with the right tide to get it done. Uh, what a huge difference it is, and I really appreciate your efforts, and, and certainly Dave's efforts, and the rest of the BNG.
Yep, they did a great job.
For going down and doing that, the ladder's there, the ladder, I understand, is gonna come out in the wintertime.
Right.
Um, but it makes it a much, as safe as it can be for what we have.
That's true, it is.
That's what it comes down to, and I really appreciate, there's a lot of people that use it, um, and I had gotten a lot of calls on it, so it was, it was really nice to see it done, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave Zabrowski, and the rest of the BNG guys.
Thank you.
All right.
Do I picture? Yeah, you can, put it in file, very quickie.
Go ahead. All right. So, uh, we spearheaded, uh, with the supervisors, guidance, looking to do ways to make, I'm sorry, more energy efficient. Improving the energy efficiencies across some of the town facilities, so, uh, a couple months back, we, we picked about, uh, five or six buildings, the more of the energy hogs, so to speak, to focus on, and we put out a request for proposals for a company to come in, give us an energy audit, and come up with a capital improvement program that utilizes the energy savings, uh, to pay for all of this work. So, we had a presentation by a, a company, we went out, um, we got three proposals back, um, and we, based on an engineering and project management and execution type of recommendation, uh, we, the engineering department feel that, uh, one of the recipients, uh, one of the proposals that we received, uh, is exemplary and should be awarded, uh, to proceed forward, and that would go to Johnson Controls. We focused on, uh, town hall, uh, police department, highway, senior center, um, municipal garage, and I don't know if I'm missing another one, but those are the five, five or so. And sorry, streetlights as well.
And this, and this, which, which?
So, it's this building, uh, the police department, senior center, municipal garage, the highway department, and street lighting. So, the streetlights throughout the entire town would be the focus of the project.
And a preliminary estimate on that, we would save over two hundred thousand dollars a year, just lighting alone. If the lights change out, they'll pay for itself in three years.
Great.
Pretty amazing.
So, it's, it's a, it's a good program, um, so I hope that the board wants to proceed forward with it. Again, the, one of the main objectives of the program is that it's self-sufficient, so whatever money we save, we'll pay for it, the loan, or whatever, whatever type of bonding or loan we have to take out to pay for it.
Now, Johnson Controls performs, it says, technical energy orders free of charge.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons why.
That's pretty comprehensive, right?
It's pretty comprehensive.
Not just lights, it's about drafts, windows, doors.
Exactly.
Guys that charge in forty, can't see that.
So, uh, we felt that, uh, even if we didn't proceed forward with every part of the contract, at least the, uh, we're gonna get, uh, the energy order for free.
Which is, by what reason?
Which is, you know, a pretty extensive, uh, pretty extensive project in and of itself, so to get that for free is a pretty, that's one of the reasons why we recommended them, not only for their technical expertise upfront, I think, long-term as well, with the commissioning and, and the inevitable technical support that's gonna have to happen, if the project goes through, there's always gonna be a hiccup here and there. They'll be able to address those issues as they come up.
They were very impressive in their presentation, they, they provided to us back a couple months.
Yeah, I mean, the other, the other gentleman that presented, you know, to his, um, to his credit, he was, they're very good as well, it's just we felt, the first step is a technical order, having that for free, you know, is a no-brainer to, to try to pitch to you guys to, to wanna do the project, the free order is a free order, so.
And then, once the audit's done, they'll, they'll give out, they'll give whatever the project is in the payback period on it, right? So then you can decide to choose what to do or not to do based on, on, uh, how the finances work.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yep.
What about the, uh, boiler?
Yeah, and, you know, they offered, uh, a more speedy solution to our boiler situation, so that'll get taken care of here before the winter.
We'll have heat.
We won't have to hear the band in fact.
Yes, that's, that's part of the, the plan, is to execute that project.
It's like seventy years old.
We're waiting for seventy-five. But we're trying to execute that project, um, drop that date, hoping it's like October first or October fifteenth, but, so we kinda wanna move that along.
Probably go to Gershaw, that gives pretty good chunk. How old is that, I guess, my God?
Oh, I, I mean, is everybody okay with the recommendation?
Absolutely.
Prices are right.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the prices are right, and, you know, this is just the first step, so we're gonna get then a laundry list of what things will cost, and then.
Pick up prioritizes.
And they'll come back and present to us again.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be more, this is just the, the first step to, to begin the project.
Okay, all right, yeah, so let's move forward with that. All right, and next, uh, is Jeff's. Uh, we can start on resolutions, and then we'll get here, so there, the next one is the chapter on environmental review, that's Jeff Seaman and Jeff Murfree, so let's start with the resolutions as they're making.
There it is.
So, the first one is budget adjustment for the installation of hardwire fire and, um, CO detectors. Second is justice court budget adjustment. This is for interpreter service, yeah. Uh, authorizes per, purchase of a used generator for use by the town engineering department. Uh, yep, that's coming from South Hall. Uh, point to police officers to the police department, accepts the resignation of a part-time police court officer.
Is this a full-time police officer, or is it?
Uh, yes.
Full-time, yeah.
Yeah, I believe this is when, uh, Dave Hagamiller had come to us, they had offered the position to, um, somebody who chose not to accept one of the openings. And, yeah. Accepts the resignation of a part-time court officer, we did that one. Adops a local law to amend local law to, oh my God, adopts a local law to amend a local law to amend chapter two thirty-one entitled "The Fire Prevention of the Riverhead Town Code." Uh, this was for the triennial, triennial inspections. Adops a local law to amend chapter three oh one of the Riverhead Town Code entitled "Zoning and Land Development," Article fifty-two commercial, uh, is this correct, for commercial solar energy?
The title is wrong, so this is the, um, this is the adopter that we need to change the code to allow that, um.
The gross floor area would be, would be?
Be a part of the site planting, so the title is just incorrect, so I think it's Diane Ford, just to get switched for you guys, so it'll, the title will be correct.
Okay, so this is when the story, the, when there was more than one story?
There's still a cap on the site planting at thirty thousand dollars, like you have to set, just include multiple floors.
Uh, the next one, eight is awards bid for food and meat products. Nine is ratifies appointment of a seasonal lifeguard to the recreation department.
Hang on, one second, that meat product. We gotta go through the, uh, very long, got a lot of meat here, that's pretty good.
I didn't put that in your pass, or, or the.
That's, that's okay, it's, you know, and it's in the resolution, it says it's attached, so.
Yeah, it, it's there.
Yeah, no, that's okay, 'cause it, it says, uh, it says prices for the attached pages, so you gotta.
Yep, they're there.
Attached on this thing.
They're in there.
Uh, seasonal lifeguard, okay.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay, so nine is ratifies the appointment of a seasonal lifeguard to the recreation department. Ten is ratifies the appointment of a seasonal lifeguard to the recreation department. Eleven is accept the resignation of a member of the Board of Directors for the Riverhead Industrial Development Agency.
I'm sorry, can't over me, I think.
Um, that's eleven. Twelve is authorizes an agreement with the Riverhead Central School District for a school resource officer program. Um, this is the school resource officer that will split, split with them.
That's great.
Um, I have twelve, but I don't have a thirteen, is there a thirteen?
There's a reason.
Okay, all right. Riverhead Sewer District Budget Adjustment for Generator. Fifteen is Riverhead Sewer District Budget Adjustment, uh, this is, uh, the roof, uh, roof, roof repairs, some roof repairs over there. It's the water district roof we just redid, right?
Yes.
Um, sixteen is adopt a local law, entitle the local law to change the term of office of town supervisor from two years to four years. Um, seventeen is denies County of Suffolk's application under New York State Highway Law, section two oh seven regarding discontinuance and abandonment of the terminus approximately two thousand one hundred eighty-three feet, and bisecting land owned by the County of Suffolk, Riverside Drive, Riverhead, New York. This is over at the golf course, is everybody okay with that?
Um, I don't support it, but it's, um, it's okay, but, uh.
Authorizes supervisor execute agreement with Riverhead Youth Sports, Inc., for referee and umpire services for Town of Riverhead Police Athletic League Football Program for two thousand eighteen calendar year. Uh, nineteen is authorizes town clerk to publish and post a notice of public hearing to consider a proposed local law for the amendment of chapter two eighty-nine entitled "Vehicles, Traffic, and Parking Regulations of Riverhead Town Code, Weight Limit of Five Tons, Parkway Street." Um, this is, uh, street, I don't know if we have the map in here.
Yeah, it runs between Rayner and Columbus.
Yeah, this is, there's industrial property, um, uh, located right near this, and they're using the residential street to, uh, drive the large trucks through, so it was requested to put a weight in it.
They got the laundromat there, and they got the, uh.
Yeah, it's in the street.
Yep.
Um, thank you. Adops a local law to amend chapter two fifty-one entitled "Noise, Public Nuisance, and Property Maintenance of the Riverhead Town Code, Bamboo." And when that one goes through, we'll just, I mean, we should put that one last, like drop the mic after that. Amends Resolution one seventy-one, uh, let's see. Oh, this is, originally, when we started the year, we had, Bob had, uh, we had put a limit on the, uh, amount for settlements, so we're looking to up that limit to, uh, twenty-five thousand, and, uh, I think maybe we can have Bob come into one of the work sessions just to explain, um, you know, if we need, if there's anything we need to do, whether it be more education or anything else to prevent, um, prevents incidents. Uh, two twenty-two is declares personal property, Grumman Memorial Park trailer surplus and obsolete, and authorizes disposal of same. Uh, that's at the Grumman Memorial, over there, they have that blue trailer in the back that nobody's using, that's falling apart, so, um, that is to remove that. Twenty-three is approves chapter two fifty-five, application of Starfish Junction Productions LLC, Long Island Fresh Hop Festival, Saturday, September twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, twenty-four is construction of a concrete ground storage tank and booster station at plant fifteen, additional budget adjust, adjustments. Uh, two twenty-five is, uh, five, four fifty-two, Water Main Service Installation, Water District Capital Project Number eighty-one, eight fifty-three. This is on, on Main Street. Twenty-six is awards bid for well and pump testing evaluation reporting and information management for use by the Riverhead Water District.
That was perfect timing.
And that's, yeah, very good. All right, you guys can come right on up.
That's where I want.
Yeah, don't say.
Where's my company three one?
Oh, do you know what, Laura kept, Laura, Laura is out this week, so it might be possible. So, the country fair?
Yeah, I know, just yesterday.
So just, just make sure that that's on for Tuesday. All righty, welcome.
Hi, um, this has to do with chapter two twenty-five, the proposed law on having a new chapter devoted to SECR, uh, which gives us a little bit more clarity in terms of the secret review process, and also, uh, as to what actions would be, this is a type one, type two are enlisted. We had the public hearing back on July third, and several board members had questions about it, namely, what is on the type one list now that was not previously on the type one list and why? So, uh, Jeff Seaman, uh, prepared the law and, and we'll go to the type one list. He highlighted them and read as to the response as to why, uh, recommendations were what they were.
So would you ask, we had asked to just provide some, some examples also for some clarity?
I was unaware of the example for question, but I can explain.
Well, that's okay, that's okay, that's okay, I, we, we had, yeah. Some clearer definition, test it.
Yeah, I think, I think this answers some of the questions you have, if not all of them.
Okay. That was fine.
Yeah. So, Jeffrey, if you just go through.
Sure. On the type ones, and again, I remind everyone, type one doesn't automatically trigger a full environmental impact statement. This is just a long form and a coordinated review so that all involved agencies understand what's going on with the application. This avoids even internally, for example, the zoning board moving forward with a decision prior to the planning board having an opportunity to review, for example, what those variances might be from the standpoint of, of their planning, so. Oh, and also while we're on the topic, the New York State, uh, secret regulations are also changing, effective January twenty nineteen, January first. They are making some modifications to their type-two actions, which, after we go through this, I think I'll highlight their changes if that's all right.
Okay.
Okay, so from, for the hotels of twenty units or greater, these projects sometimes require ZBAA, uh, requests due to site coverage, but also the stress and location where these may be placed can put additional stress on our water supply and waste water systems.
So Jeff, in, in these areas, motel and hotel complexes with, of twenty units or greater, where, where, what zones can we typically put those in, in town?
I don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay.
Uh, typically you see them along waterfront, you see them along the, the more major arterial roads. Um, but unfortunately, we do have some in the more remote residential areas, which are now become year-round housing. So, you know, when you see the expansion of these things, it warrants the additional information needed to do a proper review. And it often involves multiple agencies, uh, typically, planning board, probably requires a special permit from the town board and also from ZBAA, and that's why, um, I think it's mandatory that there be this coordinated review between the boards, and that's what the difference between an enlisted and a type one. Unlisted coordinated review is optional, and it doesn't really help an agent's or an application, because if, for example, you decide that you're not gonna coordinate review, you do your own secret determination, guess what, the zoning board or the planning board, whichever board that's being reviewed by can make its own decision, and they could pos-deck it. So it really doesn't, uh, benefit anybody by doing the enlisted uncoordinated review. So when you see a hotel, there are multiple issues with it, you know? We're even addressing school issues, uh, school population issues, for example, and traffic issues and community character issues, and that warrants the elevated review. And that's why we're putting it forward as a type-one action.
Uh, number two, the sand mining, I think that probably speaks to itself, because New York State DEC may issue a, a sand mine permit, but our regulations don't, don't permit it, that's happened in the past, we get into these conflicts with DEC. So type wanting it here mandates another coordinated review even with, with DEC. Plus our excavation permits require that typical, uh, two-dollar per yard charge, so that also allows that coordination to take place with the building department. With the expansion of any solid waste management facilities proposed by the town, uh, Riverhead does have a solid waste management plan, and again, DEC can sometimes act prior to their coordination with us. Applicant comes in, he has his permit, puts more pressure on the planning board or the zoning board of, of appeals to move forward. Uh, this would prevent that from happening, uh, again. Our parking facilities, uh, I listed that primarily because, um, when you add another fifty spaces, depending upon the zone that that might take place in, um, it might be marginal to a resi- residential area, but I think we know that parking in, at least in the downtown areas is really stressed out. And that was just, again, for better coordination.
And it doesn't, it doesn't stymie the ability to develop or build, it actually enhances it and, and to, because you're not going to, if you have to go to get your variance, or you have to get, go to planning, or you do need a special permit, that, that the questions being asked are, are coordinated across all three entities.
Yes, the short form is very limited with the amount of information that we get. So what happens is my secret review usually is listed as pending as the site plan is being reviewed. So if Karen, Greg, Jefferson are reviewing the site plan, they're waiting for my secret report, but I don't have enough information in the initial submission to make any kind of real solid guidance or determination, other than to ask for more information. This, uh, longer form allows us to gather that information, and again, if there are, whether internal or external, um, approvals, sometimes we get comments from the health department that, uh, they need an article twelve permit for, for fuel storage or something like that, and they'll give the applicant a long list of items to do, well, we wanna make sure that we can coordinate that for, for our review as well, so.
So it's kind of knowing what, one hand, what the other hand is doing as you're going through the process.
And I can finish my reports more intelligently and, and let everyone know, okay, secret can pretty much move forward, or I'm ready to just give it a neg deck, move forward with the application, knowing that.
Why don't you just do away with the short form and do NA on the long form?
And that's the problem, if you, they, and, and here's the, here's the thing that kind of, uh, uh, you know, some people think that, you know, we're being a little onerous with this, but if you're proposing something that we're saying that we need this information, for example, if you're proposing a twenty additional motel units, if you can't provide the information on, on a EAF long form, then why are you even before us? Because if you're proposing something that big, you should have consultants on board who know how to submit that form. I prepared them myself.
Oh, sure.
That's always their problem. Give us the information upfront, be transparent about it, and it makes the review process much more efficient.
And, and although I don't know which zoning district the hotels and motels are permitted, most of them go along, uh, New York State DOT roadway system or a county roadway system, so we end up with DPW involvement, uh, other highway administrations, not just, uh, local. So we end up coordinating the review anyway, and again, they're always looking, the other agencies prior to issuing any permit are always coming back to the applicant, uh, and to our planners, wanting to know where are we with secret, do a secret determination, right? So if I have inadequate or incomplete information, I, I can't move the application forward.
So it really, really just holds up the whole process?
It does, it really does, doesn't, now, a small, a small, simple, straightforward, you know, internal building changes, et cetera, short form, very easy, probably gonna be a type-two, you know, bang, we can get it right out the door and not hold up anybody. Um, subdivisions with twenty lots or more in the APZ, um, that would typically be discouraged in the master plan, but certainly it's, it's doable, uh, but because of the coordination with the master plan and the number of lots involved, we felt that we'd like to make it type-one, because again, the short form would be.
Even just water and sewer?
Inadequate, mhm, yes. On the critical environmental areas, although we've, um, reserved our definition as to where these may be in the future, uh, that type-one is compatible with current DE, DEC, uh, type-one actions under the state secret program. On, on the next one, I think there may have been some confusion, so, on number eight, conversions to residential apartments, condos, cooperatives of twenty units or more. It wasn't meant to list a conversion of an existing resident apartment to a condo. It was a conversion of a structure, for example, the Woolworths, that was converted and they had twelve units upstairs. If that had gone to twenty, we would like to see more information on the EAF again because of sewer and water. So that was really for structures, any structure. Uh, new residential apartments, condos and cooperatives of twenty units or more, really for the same issues of parking, community character, possibly building heights depending upon the footprint of what they're working with on their lot. Number ten, um, these are actions for commercial and multifamily within the historic district or, or within five hundred feet of the district, and that was to preserve the community character, which we'd like to coordinate better with, uh, preservation, yes. And then number eleven, yes?
Just that, you're just, so how onerous would that be then on somebody if they're, they're, they have a, a home and they're just, you know, a single-family home and, and they wanted to co- convert it to a, a two-family home, you know, near the historic? How, how onerous is that for a, a residential?
Well, that's a very good question, because it does say for commercial, um, or, or multifamily.
But like if you just, if you wanna do like a mother-daughter house, you know, would that fall underneath this?
No, that would be an automatic type-two, because it, it is still a single-family residential home, and under the state type-two actions, that just goes type-two.
So when, what, what becomes multifamily?
I believe it's three or more, yes.
So it'll be three or more separate housing units within the structure?
Or, or attached.
Or attached, okay.
And as they're doing the long form, they may be just ticking off, you know, not applicable or no, 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 very little impact, which will interpret, but this captures the other units that might be more significant.
Okay.
There are zones that regulate that, where that can be.
Yep.
Uh, number eleven is for commercial expansion of pre-existing non-conforming uses in, in any zoning use district, because we do see that at all levels, eighty thousand square foot lots in RA eighty being subdivided into much smaller lots that would conflict with the master plan, and we just sort of, you know, go into this.
It's a gray area.
Yes, it is.
It's a very, very gray area, and I think, you know, I think being able to have the information upfront, to be able to make the decisions is, is certainly, um, allows everybody to make more comprehensive decisions.
But a long form, um, that doesn't necessarily mean a positive declaration.
No, no, no.
I, I think that's what people.
Yes, that's what people think about.
If you submit a really solid, comprehensive, well-written EAF long form, that can often, uh, provide the information that we don't want the, the pos-deck. Trust me, we don't want to go down.
You're gonna say the long form, oh my god, I'll be in pos-deck and then.
No.
Eight months out, yeah, right.
No, because the, the determination of significance, which would push it either to a neg deck or a pos deck, doesn't take place until after that form is reviewed and more information, even after that, even a traffic study, et cetera, uh, might be triggered. We're not looking to entertain a lot of EISs coming through for a lot of reasons.
But even you could do it, you could have the long form, have the traffic study that's done, and still, and still give it a negative.
Correct, yes, yes, and we would isolate it to just those few issues, water, wastewater, et cetera, that we wanna focus on. And mitigating measures might be as simple as, you know, putting in low-flow plumbing fixtures, et cetera, in order to show or changing of hours of operations so that it doesn't conflict with the pressure loss that we're seeing in the water district. So, it, I think it also brings to the attention of the. Well, I think the applicants, it, it should stimulate a little bit more consulting by their professionals on how to solve some of the problems before it gets right away through the planning.
Gives them a better picture of what they're doing.
Yes.
Right.
Now, number twelve, and, and this is probably a good segue into, uh, how the state is starting to change its secret guidelines. We're recommending a type-one action for expansion of commercial solar facilities that fall within our commercial solar code. Now, the state, and this is a bit generalized, uh, is adding to their type-two actions, which would be automatically done under secret. Installation of solar arrays on landfills, cleaned-up brownfields, at wastewater treatment facilities, ended sites zoned for industrial use, or solar canopies on residential and commercial parking facilities. I have a bit of an issue about sites zoned for industrial use, because.
That's where our solar is.
That's not only where it is, but also the home rule of the municipality should be able to determine what it wants or does not want under its own secret guidance, if it's more strict. The states, and in our case, it's dramatically more strict, because they're saying green light, no further action, and there's no limit as to the magnitude. Typically, we're gonna find that these occupy more than ten acres, though it does fall under that ten-acre category, but.
Would this, this wouldn't exempt the ten acres, though?
It could.
It could. And our planning board recommended that any application that fits our commercial code go to type-one.
Well, the home rule would, would it?
I believe it would, yes.
Okay.
Uh, but I think we, anyone coming in with an application should be aware of these changes are approved.
That's why I think this code is so essential, because if we have a solar farm that's a couple hundred acres in size, we don't want them being automatically type-two actions, there's too many issues involved with that type of review, that magnitude of a project.
Agricultural lands that are converted or other industrial spaces, et cetera, so.
And, and we, we, you know, I mean, we just know from the applications that we have that, that our solar projects tend to be much larger.
Yeah, we have the land.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Is that in there?
Let's head off before January twenty nineteen.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Jeff, did you talk about the wireless towers, I thought you skipped them.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah, number four.
Sure. So the wireless towers are. Yeah, we're gonna place those in the type-one, because we're often asking, after the application is made, for, uh, visual impact analysis, photo simulations, and I don't mean an artist sketch, or here's the great tower on a cloudy day in a rainstorm type of photo. We wanna see some real accurate, uh, depiction on the community impacts that that might take place. Our code is written that you need to have, uh, one hundred percent of the fall zone, not go over the property line. But what it doesn't speak to, our code doesn't speak to any existing structures that might be within that property or parking lots or cars, et cetera, that could be impacted due to the collapse of the tower. It's only protecting adjacent properties, but we can, through this, take a look at health and safety features within the proposed fall zone.
Breakaway, dead breakaway zones, or unless some of these towers do.
Well, they, they, they do, but we've seen some where, I've seen two applications where buildings, uh, were on the site, but within the fall zone, and our, our main question was, well, you know, what if, what if, I mean, if we're already looking at the property line, well, what about everything within the hundred feet?
Have they, has there been, has there been incidents of these self- Have they, has there been, has there been incidents of these cell towers falling?
Not, not that I know of, but it's, it kind of speaks.
In movies all the time.
Code, you see?
In the movies?
Yeah, if you look on the movies.
But that's why you have good planning, so it doesn't.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious, I mean, the, uh, uh, because just because I've seen a lot of cell towers, and I'm going to say a hundred-foot fall zone around it is probably not typically what you see, um.
Well, it's a hundred percent, a hundred percent of, of the height.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, if it's a three-hundred-foot tower, it's three-hundred-foot radius all the way around, but our code says it must be a minimum of, of that height from the property.
Outside of the property, okay.
But it doesn't respect anything inside the property, um, so.
You're at your own risk, you're putting it up.
Correct.
And does the SECRE, besides the fall zones, which is important, does it, it doesn't really address needs analysis, or no?
It, well, our code does, and that would be an expansion of the type-one, the type-one request.
That's my big value, right? Yeah, what is it? The one he grabbed a lot of people, and it's just so exciting.
And, and the other question of, um, alternative locations, including existing towers or other infrastructure like water towers and, and tanks and bridges, et cetera, that could be utilized, or, or alternative technologies.
Right.
That should be.
Which is not too attractive either.
Right, yes.
The small cell. It, now, would this, will this, will this also address, uh, small cell?
No, I, I've never seen any small cells come through, but.
They're coming soon. They're, I'm sure, they'll, I'm sure they'll, I know that it's probably one of the newer technologies where they do the small cell. I don't, I know there is an issue of whether the small cell is underneath our zoning or not, and who has, uh.
Correct.
Who has the ability to regulate that, so, um.
And there's, there's also this misunderstanding as to what small is, um, and I used to believe this myself until I worked in an industry that was installing them, is that they can put the antennas on existing utility poles along road right-ofways, and that sounds pretty benign that you have small antennas along a road right-ofway. Well, the small antennas for the size of your garbage can that you install out by the street, and the only service, the range is very, so limited, it only services the houses on either side of the street. So, you have garbage cans basically on every other power pole going up and down the street, which is not visually minimal. It's, it's a pretty, and I know we're not supposed to talk about electromagnetic radiation, the RF frequencies and health issues.
The unknowns, right.
But I have a utility pole literally thirty feet from my house. If I had an antenna on, it's only thirty feet from my house, so there is that concern that we're not allowed to address, but it's there.
Right.
So, it just might be something for you to consider when you're.
Correct, and it may, the technology is continuously evolving.
We never know the long-term effects of all that we've got now.
Right.
Right.
But we do know what the small cells look like on.
Right.
Poles.
Yes.
And they tend to be in dense, small areas such as the downtown.
Yep, and we don't want to see plethora of antennas on buildings, especially in the downtown.
But we do want coverage, so.
We do need some here.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, for, for businesses, we do need, we do need the, the coverage also for the smaller cell cells. All right, is there any questions that anybody has? Is there any, is there any, any thoughts on, of any of the things on here that you might have?
Type-two actions pretty much haven't changed with, or aren't going to change with the new law?
Uh, correct, we're, we're, we're putting in, uh, the minor subdivisions that are compliant with all of our existing codes because that was also sort of a gray area.
Mm-hmm.
But we wanted to clean that up and make those type-twos.
Yeah, there's, because it, it's if you, if you can, the minor subdivision, even if it's a, correct me if I'm wrong, because this, I didn't read it, but I know, but even if it's on a larger lot, if there's no further development past the minor subdivision, so if you have a twenty-acre lot and, and, oh, you're only putting up a minor subdivision, it can, it falls under the type-two as long as you can then not develop on the rest of that, that acreage.
There's no further subdivision.
No further subdivision, so it would have to be under twenty-four acres, twenty-four acres. So, so that was the only thing that was included in here.
So, we did have a public hearing on it, and it was left open, well, it was closed with written comments and pending, uh, this explanation back to you. If the board is happy with our responses, we can prepare a notice of adoption for you at your next meeting. It wouldn't be on the next meeting, it would be the meeting after.
Is everybody okay with moving forward with that? Okay.
And we'll make sure we get a copy of this to Council on the Giggs, we hope, because she's under.
Two other, uh, notable, uh, January effective SECRE changes, oh, boy. No, I think these are, these are maybe good. DEC or state law will no longer accept a voluntary draft environmental impact statement as part of an addendum to the full environmental assessment form. So, if it's the, you know, if it looks like a project is heading toward a POSDEC, they will go through the full SECRE process.
And that's certain.
And as part of that process now, all positive-decked applications must receive a formal scoping session.
An optional.
Formal scoping process, so it's no longer an option.
Sure.
And that will clarify.
And that's with the DEC?
That's DEC.
That will be the DEC's.
That'd be a SECRE.
Well, we've actually already put that in our code.
Okay.
So, they're, they're catching up to us.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying, so it's, it, so, so, but they could come back with particular comments that then get added to ours.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, they won't even review it? If it's voluntary?
We won't, we accept it as a voluntary.
We won't accept it as a voluntary, so it's not even sent it out for coordinated review as the voluntary.
It doesn't, it won't exist anymore.
We'll give it back to them.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, it will be, thank you, but.
Take it back.
Give us a draft scope, and we're going to go through the scope and trust.
And what about somebody that's already in the process? That's, that, that, is it, is it retroactive to January first, or?
Well, we, we require, uh, formal scoping on this local law.
Right.
Uh, so, any incomplete application, I would, which, which applications are until they get through the process, I think would be deemed no.
Okay, that's it.
If this is passed at the next meeting and someone submits, even if they're under review, but it's incomplete, I think there's still subject to this.
And we have one in our downtown, and we are requiring formal scoping.
Okay, all right. And what else is getting to, two things or just one?
Well, I think those are, are two of the more significant.
Okay, the solar and then this?
Right.
Yeah, the solar, um, the loss.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a very big change.
Yep.
Yeah. Especially with the, that state public electric authority thing rolling around as well.
Yeah, right, it's hot now, but twenty years from now, it's going to be like, wow, man, let me go.
All righty, well, thank you very much, I appreciate everything.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your work, Jeff.
I do a good thing, I remember.
I think Bob Condon put a lot of illegal stuff together for this, really.
Very good, thank you. All right, can I have a first and second to, uh, go into executive sections for details of a pilot payment, litigation, pending litigation in the matter of the County of Suffolk and Suffolk County Comptroller and the Town of Barablon at Al?
I will make that motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right.
En route.
So, Karen.